Just another moment or two for board members. Please remember that all microphones are turned off. When you're ready to speak, please turn them on and then very quickly close your mouth. That helps you pick up the audio. Mr. Ferro, you can take us out of the practice session. And we're waiting another moment or two for some members of the public who are participant remotely to log in, and then we will begin. Just another moment. Thank you.
All right, good evening. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 873-1778-8307. And the required password is 830479. Call to order?
Ms. Secone?
Here.
Mr. Copeland?
Here.
Ms. De Venero?
Here.
Mr. De Silva? Mr. Denise?
Here.
Mr. Gallo?
Here.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Here.
Dr. Park?
Here.
And Dr. Morten?
Here.
Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on May 25th, 2022, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Salute to the flag. Ms. De Venero, will you lead us, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We will have exact at the end, okay? So no need to recess at this time. Motion to agree to... Well, we don't need to. We're already in public. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Okay, I need a motion to open our meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarski, thank you. Mr. Denise, second. Anything related to specific agenda items? Okay, let me see that one. We can close meetings to the public. Mr. Kizmarski again, second by Ms. Secone, thank you. All right, quickly, quickly, we are at superintendent's report. Dr. Turturro?
Thank you so much. So mine is, my report is two parts. The first part is up on the screen here, and we're really excited about this next experience. So Dr. Fair and I make an effort at every single meeting to really spotlight the amazing work that's happening in our district, especially during these unique times. The teachers have been creating amazing learning experiences for our students, and the administrative team really stay committed to supporting them in their work and guiding the practice. We're truly excited about this opportunity for Mawa Public Schools. Throughout the work with our strategic plan, it was really powerful to hear the voice of our community and what they really valued. High-level learning experiences, inclusive of work that focused on celebrating, valuing, and respecting the unique qualities that Mawa possesses. The work that we are about to present focuses on just that.
And throughout this process, I want to say over the last six months, we've interviewed 16 consultants, all with different styles, approaches, and experiences. You'll see we have someone else on the screen with us. She will be joining us in terms of sharing her perspective with regards to what her work with us will potentially look like. We wanted to properly introduce this work to our school community before proposing it to you as the board. We also saw this as an opportunity to meet a potential consultant, Megan, who is on the screen, and also an opportunity to talk about where we've come from, our work thus far, as well as what the plan will look like moving forward.
The language in the strategic plan focuses on work specific to inclusivity and equity as a curriculum focus, as well as a social, emotional learning focus. It also speaks about training of our staff members, and in order to create opportunities in our classrooms that allow students to feel valued and respected. We are proud of the work that we have done over the past couple of years, but we also know that there are many other opportunities to infuse this in a meaningful way.
So as Dr. Turturro shared, this has been ongoing work, as you all know. Over the course of the past school year, we've appraised the community of our work covering all four frames of our strategic plan. These are the final two of those four frames, Community Connections and Facilities. So with Community Connections, I know that there were many board meetings this past school year where we showcased our purposeful efforts in making those connections with our community. We've talked a lot about our Thunderbird Partnership Program that we launched this year, and this was our opportunity to move beyond guest speakers in the classroom and build in mentorships, internships, and externships. We've worked to connect with a range of post-secondary opportunities for our students. You'll see on this evening's board agenda even, Agenda Item 17S speaks to one of those opportunities with regards to technical career and community pathway option for students, which is really great work. We've recognized that there's still more work to do. And this has been an opportunity to find a place for all of our students and a purpose for all of our students. The fourth frame connects to facilities where we are working to create learning spaces for diverse learners. We've done some significant work in terms of our Thunderbird Think Tank, and we're still looking to find more opportunities for all types of learners and the entire district to take advantage of this learning space, as well as a variety of other learning spaces, like our outdoor learning spaces in many of our buildings.
We really wanted to ensure that the process was a thoughtful one, one that didn't have a canned program that was really forced on Mawa, that wasn't Mawa-specific. We wanted to have a clear picture of what Year One will look like, and you'll see that on the screen, and then we'll talk about those Year One goals in the following slides.
So how we get there will be based on stakeholder voice. So during the strategic planning process, which many of our board members and people I see in the crowd this evening were a part of, our community informed our decision-making forward, where equity and inclusion were one of several priorities shared during these dialogues. And voice is the reason we've achieved such success so far. So this process, in terms of equity and inclusion in our district, will be a similar process in that we'd like to hear everyone's perspective. So I guess since Megan has been on the screen, I guess let's start with just Megan introducing yourself and your work thus far.
Absolutely, thank you so much. And first, I'd just like to thank everyone for having us here today, myself representing Us Squared. My name is Megan Quittrelli, as you can see on the screen, and I am the founder and chief empowerment officer for Us Squared. Us Squared, as you see on the screen, stands for Understand Self, Unite Society, and we are a consulting firm that focuses on social justice issues, inclusive of equity, diversity, and inclusion. And my personal background, just so that you know a little bit more about myself, I am actually a retired superintendent who, after leaving the school system, decided to do this work more full-time. And I have been very honored and humbled to be able to do this work alongside a team of people across the U.S. And having worked with quite a few school systems, it is always a pleasure to introduce a new school system to our family here at Us Squared. And I don't know if you want me to go too much in detail. I think we're just doing an intro at this point, but I'm looking forward to sharing a little bit more about our process and who we are here at Us Squared as we continue.
No, Megan, that was great. So we're going to go to the next slide, that we're going to start to talk about the different trainings and the different opportunities for community engagement. As we said in the beginning, it's really important because this is new work along the lines of bringing someone in and working with us. So our number-one priority to the board and to our community is really transparency and really clear goals for our first year, so everyone understands going into this work, if approved, that we're eyes wide open on what we're about to embark on.
So we'd like to take the time to unpack what this experience will look like, to gain an understanding of how we will proceed through the work, because quite frankly, we don't claim to be experts in this work. That's why we're working with a consultant. So you'll see on the screen, we're going to have dedicated time this school year to work with our administrators and our leadership team. So I guess, Megan, why don't I prompt you with, you know, what would administrator training look like? What would your work look like with our leadership team?
Yeah, so one of the pieces, and thank you for asking this question, because it's important for us all to understand why we operate with the structure that we do. It's important for us to make sure that everyone, especially the leaders who will be leading and answering a lot of questions, have a solid understanding of the role of this work. And when we say this work, we're saying the aspect of all of the pieces that encompass having a truly inclusive environment and focusing that lens on inclusivity, as this shares on the slide. In that administrator retreat, this will be an introduction to the component, really to help people understand the why behind the work, and also to allow participants to really comprehend and reflect on their own why within this work. So we will look at things such as how diversity, equity, and inclusion impact our decision-making, how it impacts our representation and what we choose to teach our students, how it impacts our discipline practices, and ultimately, our culture and climate. So we will do a lot of introductory foundational pieces and start planting, we use the phrase a lot here at Us Squared, we're going to be starting by planting the seed with our leaders in the organization, so that when we come in to do the equity audit and continue the work, we have supporters on the ground to understand their own why and why it's important for Mawa as an organization and as a district.
So that was a perfect segue into the next piece of this. And what we valued in our conversations with Megan and her team was the importance of having everyone at the table and having the conversations, really understanding the reality of what Mawa is. Again, I'm going to go back to it. We didn't want a canned program that might fit another district that doesn't fit ours. It's really important for us to understand what our current realities are, what our identity is, what are our strengths, which is always important to celebrate, but what are some areas that we can build out and grow? And in order to do that, we learned through our strategic plan that community voice, and I say community, that means all of us here, all of everyone at home, everyone inclusive, included in the school, to be at the table to share what their thoughts are, what their feelings are, and what their experiences are here in Mawa. So Megan, if you would, if you can kind of talk through the different aspects of community engagement, and as everyone can see on the screen, there's town halls, you referenced the equity audit in the last slide, and then there's that crafting of the roadmap moving forward. All of those aspects, we have stakeholders involved and allowing voices to be at the table. So if you could just talk through each of those?
Absolutely, I'd love to. So as we work through this, our first step in the fall will be to conduct a town hall. And a town hall is an opportunity for all of the stakeholders to share some of their concerns, as well as some of the things that they're very proud of, so that we can craft, like has been said multiple times by Dr. Turturro and Dr. Fair, we craft what we do for every organization we work with based on the needs of the organization and based on the initial foresight that we're able to gain. We do some research in advance, we look through the website, we look through other pieces we can find online, and then we conduct a town hall with your local community members that includes, again, your parents, your community partners, your board members, your stakeholders, your students, your staff, and it gives everyone an opportunity to share their concerns, very similar to an open meeting for a board meeting, where people have a few minutes to share their thoughts. It's not necessarily a Q and A, it's more of an opportunity for people to come to us, share what they hope to see from the equity audit moving forward, and then we do provide some information about how they can become involved in the next level, which moves into the equity audit. With the equity audit, we perform this with a three-pronged approach, and you see the three prongs represented here. We have our self-assessments, which we ask each of your schools and the district as a whole to complete. This is the opportunity for everyone in the organization at the staff level to say, this is what we believe we deliver, this is what we are working on. And then we move into the second piece of surveys. We have three different surveys that we administer. We have one survey for your younger students, K through 5. We have another survey for your older students, grade 6 through 12. And then we have an adult survey, which encompasses your staff, your community partners, your parents, and any community members, such as board members as well. Those surveys are an opportunity for us to assess what people's perceptions are of what the school believes they are delivering. And as we already discussed, our goal as an outside agency is to be able to say, here are some gaps. And then we come in and do some of our own research, again, asking for policies and procedures, and we will actually come to your district for just under a week, and we will be on-site for those four days with our team, really talking to different people, conducting focus groups, as you see as the third bullet here, talking to individuals just in the hallway as we're walking down the hall. Having those conversations and really hearing people's stories, because one of the things we believe in at Us Squared is that statistics and data are great. At the same time, what really moves us to action are people's individual stories and the emotion and the heart behind the work. So that really is our foundational component. Then, once we've collected all of the data, both qualitative and quantitative data, we will craft a report. That report of findings is crafted by our team with all of the information we gathered during the equity audit, and that report of findings also has recommendations embedded. And once we have that completed, that's where we move to the third step, which you see here, of crafting the roadmap. Now, in conjunction with Mawa, we will create a group of people, no more than 10 people, who will work on this roadmap with us. You will partner with our team to say, here are the recommendations, here are all the gaps that were identified, but also be realistic with what can be accomplished in what timeframe. Because for true change to be held accountable, to hold people accountable, and for it to be sustainable, we recognize that it takes anywhere from three to five years. So that roadmap will be a strong guideline for Mawa to be able to use moving forward of this is what we will do in Year One, Year Two, and Year Three. We do not prescribe those recommendations for you. We tell you what recommendations we would offer, and then as a team, the Mawa community decides what is going to be moved forward with, and then we are there in that process to support you, to make sure that those goals are realistic and also all encompassing, again, making sure all voices are heard throughout the process.
So we appreciate that oversight and really the overview of exactly what the experience is going to entail. We know that this is something that's new for all of us, as I said in the beginning, and I think, as I also shared, communication is crucial. So what we're trying to do prior to any sort of vote from the board for this work, we wanted to educate the board and also the community on what we are hopeful for. Following this meeting, for anyone who's not here or doesn't see it online, we'll craft communication that's going to be sent out to the community to educate them on what was proposed to the board. We'll also talk about, we are looking to put something on the agenda for June 15th for consideration from the board to move forward with this. If by chance this is approved, we will also make a concerted effort, like we did with the strategic plan, by sending out information to all of our community stakeholders to get as many people as we can to be involved in those town halls, and really make sure that we're messaging throughout the process to our community on what this really entails. So in short, this is the work that we're hopeful to take on. We appreciate Megan being here, but we also told Megan that we wanted to give the board an opportunity to ask questions, if you have some specific to what was presented, or if there's things that weren't, and you have some more questions, please feel free to do that at this time.
Any board member question? Mr. Copeland? Mr. Copeland?
Megan, how does that work with you?
I think she can hear you.
Yeah. Can you hear me, Megan, I hope?
Can you hear?
We'll repeat if she...
Okay, all right.
I was going to say, please, if you can repeat, I'm fairly faintly hearing a voice, but I can't quite make out the question, the right thing.
There it is, hold on. My question is more of the experience of Us Squared with districts similar to Mawa. What's the experience like from your perspective, Megan, from what you've seen specifically with your work in districts like ours, and also from an outcome standpoint, looking forward in a year or so, once we're done with this process? With your experience with districts like ours, what were some of the outcomes that you saw? What were some of the recommendations that you were able to make to those districts, and what were some of the things that they implemented?
So were you able to capture any of that? No.
I believe the last part was asking for what outcomes we've been able to support schools in accomplishing. I did not catch the first part.
Yeah, so it was prefaced by speaking to experience with similar school districts such as Mawa.
Got it. Yeah, so we have worked with just under 70 school districts over the last, probably we incorporated in 2016, but I've been doing the work a couple of years before that. So even when I was in the school system, I was doing some work around social justice and having partnered with quite a few organizations. So we've worked with quite a few school districts, and many of those are very similar. We actually have, even though I am founded and based here in Detroit, Michigan, probably 30% of our clients are actually in the New Jersey, Delaware, Pennsylvania area. So we have a large clientele out that way, and very similar demographics across the country where there's pockets that are very similar to Mawa. As far as the outcomes that we've been able to support our schools, and what we say is, we're not doing this alone, we're doing this with the school districts that choose to partner with us. Some of the things that we've recommended, and I've thought about this a lot because this is a question that we get asked, right? It's not just about doing the work, it's about what results do you see in that work? We have offered suggestions like shifts in curriculum, not to be focused on one area or the other, but to be more inclusive, to allow everyone to see different perspectives. Because ultimately, our goal in this work is to teach students to be critical thinkers and to look at how to ask questions so that everyone's voices are heard. We've also encouraged groups to add student groups or organizations so that students feel a stronger sense of belonging, and we've seen that happen as well. We've implemented some mentoring programs in conjunction with many of our school systems. We've done quite a bit of work around HR practices and recommended a stronger pipeline for recruitment, hiring, and retention, so that we're looking at really who we're hiring and what are those core competencies that we're looking for when hiring within our schools. And most importantly, especially recently, are really looking at mental health and how a lot of mental health concerns that we are seeing right now are because of students not feeling like they are listened to or heard, or our teachers not feeling like they are valued. Because we're asking a lot of our staff, especially right now during COVID, coming out of virtual learning and just having that in between. So we've seen quite a bit of that. We've also seen a decrease of out-of-school suspensions, because we will often introduce and recommend restorative practices if they are not already implemented. Those are some of the pieces that are very commonplace when we do equity audits. And then also looking at culture and climate scores. So we will come in and we will provide the equity audit, which gives us that base foundational data. We offer an opportunity, if we choose to continue the relationship and provide training along the way, we offer an opportunity for another review of those culture and climate scores, and we've seen an increase in every district we've worked with after doing the equity audit and iterating and putting into place some of those recommendations. We've seen an increase across the board for culture and climate, which means that students, staff, and parents all feel like it's a more inclusive environment, and they are wanting to be there more, and you're seeing more growth and success because of that culture and climate score increase.
Town hall meetings, sound ready?
Thank you.
So Megan, approximately how many town hall meetings would be conducted?
So I believe in the proposal that we have right now, we have two hours dedicated for town halls. The other piece that we did not mention in this call, but one thing we always recommend to the clients we work with, especially school systems, is that we ask for an internal email address to keep the lines of communication open. So anyone who is either not able to share during a town hall, or maybe they think of something after the town hall that they want to share with us, that email address is always open, and we monitor that in-house. And as this slide that's up on the screen right now, we hold this information very much in confidence. It is only our team that looks through that information, that really internalizes that, analyzes it for our report. But we've allocated two hours. It can either be two one-hour town halls, or it can be a one-two hour session. It just depends on what we decide when we finalize, if we choose to move forward.
Megan, we have a board member, just, I'm pretty sure you wouldn't be able to hear, who is giving a suggestion that we may need to increase the town hall hours, but we can obviously talk about that further.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I don't know if she can hear me. Can she, can you hear me, Megan? Can you hear me?
I believe so, yes.
Ah, right, see, I have a louder voice than you. I'm wondering, just can you explain a little bit about how the team works? A little bit about, like, would we have a point person? I'm assuming you can't be at every school necessarily. So, you know, how does the structure of the group, and I guess we get someone or two or three people kind of working closely with our district? So if you could just explain that a little bit, please?
Absolutely. So we will assign a client engagement specialist from our team who will be your main point of contact for your contract through the duration of your contract. That client engagement specialist might be at the equity audit, they might not be at the equity audit, it just depends on what we view to be the best person from our team to be your contact liaison, as well as the best members of our team to come out and do the equity audit directly. But you will have a point of contact on our team, one of our client engagement specialists will be assigned to work with you directly, and then we will make sure that we have the very best people assigned to different components of the work. Now, as far as who we communicate with the most, usually, once it goes into contract, your client engagement specialist will communicate with Dr. Fair and Dr. Turturro, and I am always available for any conversations that need to occur, or if there's things that I need to be directly involved with. I know that I will be involved with Mawa, that's already been a discussion, that I have tentatively put some place in my calendar for that. We also have a very qualified member, multiple members of our team, we have very qualified team members who will be a part of it as well. But we will have a point person dedicated to Mawa specifically for this contract, not just the equity audit, but every component of the work that we do together.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions, Mr. Gallo?
I'm sorry to sort of come back to the town hall question. To get the voice of the student, what's the approach to sort of town hall engagement with student community?
Megan, I don't know if you heard that one, but we have another board member who asked about, what does it look like in terms of garnering student voice?
Yeah, so student voice, we garner through the surveys as well as the conversations. We do not, the town hall is something that we do not offer every equity audit. We listen to what the concerns are, and then we determine if that is something we want to offer or would be necessary for the district as a whole. So after conversations, we really wanted to make sure that that opportunity was there for some of the community members and adults in the district. But the focus groups, and when we're at the schools, and one benefit, we do these equity audits both in-person and virtually. By doing the equity audit in-person, we will have the opportunity to speak to lots of different children, both in the classroom, where we're doing classroom observations, as well as in focus groups, where we have targeted time with specific students. You will often find us during the You will often find us during the equity audit during those days where our team is actually having lunch in the lunchroom with the students. We are trying to talk to as many students as possible and get as many voices and perspectives as possible during this work.
Thank you.
Alright, Megan, so thank you so much for joining us this evening. Obviously, we will do some additional discussion amongst ourselves and we will be in touch.
Absolutely. If there are any other questions, you know how to reach out to me, and thank you so much for...
I guess that's the line.
We're done.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Too much pull.
I do, I do. I'll try to be as brief as possible, but there are a couple important things. A tragedy took place at Robb Elementary School in Texas. An email was sent out to the school community today. Please know that we continue to focus on the security measures that we have in place and work hand-in-hand with the Maua Police Department to assess our facilities and our practices. The safety of our students and staff is our top priority. As we said in our message today, the most important thing that we can do is to care for one another, look out for one another. And if you have a concern, reach out to those who can help with that matter. Maua has a special place as a result of us working together, regardless of the circumstance, to ensure that our students are educated and, most importantly, cared for by our collective community. So, obviously, this is a very difficult time for everyone, and I think it's really important for us to celebrate the wonderful things that we have and really cherish here in Maua. So I'd like to focus on a couple different things that are currently happening. There's so many things that we have that it would take forever for me to spotlight during this time, so I really encourage everyone to look online. All of the schools have done a wonderful job highlighting all the great work that's happening. I want to start with Ramapo Ridge. Over the past several weeks, some of the teachers participated in training to become familiar with the Oculus goggles and certify ed program, which is a Maua Schools Foundation grant. Our students have been able to explore careers in culinary arts, Mike? Carpentry, coding, robotics, welding, medical assistant, nursing assistant, in their pursuit to pathway cycle class. Mrs. Matulovich has been collaborating with staff members to curate an immersive experience that are connected to upcoming units of study. For example, our Spanish teachers will begin their unit on vacations, and Mrs. Matulovich is looking to curate links to various countries for students to explore. Other VR360 resources, such as the Smithsonian Museum of Natural History, the International Space Station, and Sun Dung, which I had to Google the pronunciation of that, the caves, have been explored by students to simulate experiences relevant to course content, discover distant landmarks, and explore otherwise inaccessible locations. And for all those who don't know, the Oculus goggles are those...
Virtual reality.
Virtual reality goggles that kids are now wearing and now adults are starting to utilize, that I actually bought for Christmas for golf lessons, so it's been great. You did too? We'll have to play. And Dr. Fair wrote the grant, he wanted to be the letter one. We appreciate it. Another great event, which I was able to participate in yesterday, happened at GW. It was called Hero Day, and Ms. Klobaki and her team were able to organize just an amazing experience for the kids and continue those experiences that they've had in the past. They partnered with a variety of organizations that provided 15- to 20-minute experiences for our students to increase their awareness and appreciation for the impact of our military, police, fire, EMS, and healthcare workers that we have here in the community. The students participated in the station rotation throughout the day, learning while also showing their appreciation and gratitude. Some of the contacts that came, and organizations that came, because it was just a wonderful experience all around, was the Maua Police Department, Maua Fire Department, Maua EMS, the Maua Municipal Alliance and Valley Hospital, the Bergen County Sheriff's Department, Bergen County Prosecutor's Office. And there was a contact to have a helicopter come, but unfortunately, it was too hazy, so the helicopter couldn't fly. So we're excited, hopefully, we're encouraged that next year, the helicopter will return to GW. So thank you to Ms. Klobaki and her team for putting that together. The experience was absolutely tremendous. Last but not least, I wanted to spotlight some things that are happening throughout the district specific to performing arts and athletics. There are a number of concerts that are taking place right now. The Simply Strings Concert and Bands Concerts took place showcasing our three musicians, and it was really great to see everyone back in the auditoriums experiencing the music that the students were creating. Last week, there was an art show at the high school. There were a wide variety of arts that were displayed, spanning canvas, photography, woods, digital, and much, much more. Athletics, yesterday, we saw the high school seniors, there were six athletes that signed for Division II and Division III colleges for their athletic next chapter. All sports teams in the spring made it to states and qualified for counties. The girls across won the Freedom League Championship. Jason Schmidt was inducted into the Bergen County Coaches' Century Club for 100 wins for both boys and girls. It's 100 wins each, because I know there was, we were calculating at the last meeting, I just wanted everyone to be aware, it's 100 for each side. He was also, just before this meeting, awarded the Big North Patriot Division Coach of the Year for Boys Tennis. So congratulations to not only the musicians, the artists, the athletes, and the coach, and coaches for putting in all that time and effort. Last but not least is the senior experiences. I know that it's something that we were concerned about during COVID times, and thank you to Mr. Pascal and his team for bringing back those experiences last year, and we continue those experiences this year. Actually, tonight, they have Senior Movie Night taking place, and on June 8th is our Senior Sunrise Breakfast. So that is all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Turturro. Dr. Fair? Oh, no, I'm skipping. Mr. Bleeker, next. Did not mean to skip over you, I apologize.
Good evening, everyone. I only have two comments this evening, just to speak about the two asterisks that are on the agenda, that came from items that my office typically puts on the agenda. The first is the bills list, that is an asterisk on the agenda, this has been communicated to the board, that there was a subsequent bills list that had to be sent to you, so that was received, that is different from what the board, from what members of the public received on the agenda that was publicized earlier this week. So those numbers have been adjusted accordingly as well in the agenda. The other item is at the end of the agenda, that is the award for a contract for substitute services for the following school year, for the 22-23 school year. That was a late addition to allow us some time to do the necessary reference checks on the vendor that we are awarding it to. We're awarding it to a vendor ESS to provide substitute staffing services, I want to point out and state that that is, while the acronym is the same, that's separate from the ESS vendor that we already work with at our high school. So same acronym, however, a completely different vendor. Thank you, Dr. Moret.
Thank you, Mr. Bleeker. Dr. Fair, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I always do. So you'll see that you have a one-page addendum that has a last minute retirement. That is the announcement of the retirement of our first grade teacher from Lenape Meadows School, Mrs. Caressa Kaiser. Before being at Lenape Meadows School, she started off as a Betsy Ross School teacher, and she ultimately transitioned to Lenape Meadows, and she has been with us for approximately 25 years. Mrs. Kaiser's energy and love for teaching has provided students with the skills and strategies to be successful in their academics and in their lives. She leaves us to enjoy the next chapter of her life. In her retirement, she plans to travel and to spend time and enjoy making new memories, particularly with her grandchildren. She will always have a home at Lenape Meadows School, where she has assured the building, and if you know Caressa, you can probably hear her say this, quote, "They have not seen the last of Mrs. Kaiser." So we wish her all the best after the close of the school year. And then the last two are really exciting. While we announce retirements, we also celebrate and formally welcome recommendations to our leadership team. So we have Courtney Corella, who is a familiar face. Courtney, can you just wave in case we have members who don't know who you are? We are recommending her this evening to as our new supervisor of oral languages, ESL, and gifted and talented. So in review of applicants, our team interviewed 18 candidates through Zoom preliminarily. Our interview committee was comprised of central office, along with principal and supervisory representatives. Five candidates from that initial pool were invited in for in-person interviews. Our final two candidates were to complete a presentational task related to a detailed plan connected to an innovative initiative connected to the ESL program in our school district. Ultimately, Mrs. Corella, a current teacher in Maua Schools, who presently serves as our gifted and talented coordinator, demonstrated a care for all students, a knowledge of systems thinking, and a yearn for follow-through in servicing all three of these very important programs in our district. Mrs. Corella has served as a social studies teacher at Ramapo Ridge Middle School, gifted and talented coordinator for the district, and recently completed her certificate in gifted education, as well as her supervisor certification and her master's degree in curriculum and instruction. So preliminarily, I'm excited to have you join our team. Lastly, we have our recommendation for a new building principal at Betsy Ross School, who we're really excited about. She is not from Maua, so Melissa Braus is in the front. That's Melissa. So throughout the interview process, from 60 applicants, and after interviewing 20 via Zoom video conferencing, five candidates threw a full interview panel, and as one of two finalists, Mrs. Braus showcased an authentic enthusiasm, organization, and leadership. In her current teacher leader role at Upper Saddle River, Mrs. Braus leads a variety of committees as a member of community and school-based teams, including the district safety team and its community circles committee. Through her finalist presentation, Mrs. Braus was tasked with introducing an innovative and thoughtful elementary STEAM initiative that could potentially be utilized to breathe exciting life into Betsy Ross School's STEAM lab, using our outdoor learning space and existing technology to include all content areas and specials to demonstrate seasons of STEAM through cross-curricular opportunities for our students. And obviously, Melissa did a really great job in preparing and executing that presentation for our team. Throughout the selection process, Mrs. Braus demonstrated a strength in communicating, her passion for education, and her natural leadership ability in all aspects of her work. We are very excited to have her join our team. The teachers who sat on our committee are really excited to have her join our team. So preliminarily, we're really excited to recommend Melissa to the board for approval this evening. And the last piece is really, if you look in the audience, what's so exciting is we have our team of supervisors and principals here to support our new supervisor and principal, which is really like who we are as a district and a leadership team. So I'm really excited that everyone's here. We even have Christine Noonan, who is the secretary at Betsy Ross School, who came to support her new principal. Because I'm sure Christine had other things to do, right, this evening? But thank you for being here. That deserves a round of applause. And that's your report.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Fair.
Thank you.
I'd like to begin my president's report. Am I now on the right way? Yes, I am, okay. I'd actually like to begin with a moment of silence, if we could, for those who have been slain, killed, in senseless gun violence. Okay, thank you. Most recently, it was Uvalde, that's how you pronounce that, Texas. We're reminded again of how precious life is and how unfair it can also be. When you lose 19 third and fourth graders in a mass shooting. There's been shootings in Colorado, in Buffalo, in Texas, in Florida, and we keep shaking our heads in disbelief. I just want to thank the Maua administrative team and also, you know, our security measures that we have here, and especially working very closely with the Maua Police Department in keeping the Maua students safe and secure. It's again, a very important topic and something that, as a board, we also take very seriously. I also want to thank our administrative team for promoting and supporting what we, as a community, determined was important in our strategic plan and building on our strategic plan goals. The focus on diversity, equity, inclusion demonstrates a commitment to building an inclusive, varied school atmosphere that's welcoming to students of all backgrounds. I kind of just looked online, because I wanted to see what some inclusion statements were. I really liked Apples, and I think Apple's a great, you know, company, I mean, I'm an Apple girl. They say, their statements, very short, "Different, together." At Apple, we're not all the same, and that's our greatest strength. We draw on the differences in who we are, what we've experienced, and how we think. Because to create products that serve everyone, we believe in including everyone. So again, the focus here on inclusion and giving all students a fair shot, so I just thank the administrative team for bringing this forward in support of our strategic plan. And again, I look forward to that work. Third, excellent to see the Frost Valley trip take place at Ramapo Ridge. Three? But just recently, they went this week, right, for like a one day? The sixth grade? That was a rescheduled one, right? So I know both my children had very fond memories of their trips, and even though this was a day trip, right? It's okay, we're working back up to overnight, maybe? But anyway, thanks to Brian Cory, Suzanne Whalen, and the entire Ramapo Ridge staff and the sixth grade teachers who made this trip possible, because I'm sure it's not easy to plan a trip like that, but I'm telling you, it leaves lasting memories for the kids. Alright, from our Twitter feed, Mike took pretty much most of my items, but it's okay. Congrats to the gifted and talented art students and teachers on the opening of their art show at Maua Library, which I think he mentioned, of GW School and Hero Day, thanks to Jen Klobaki and her team. The other one was, now, there was some Bergen meat of champions. This seems to be in the track and field world, am I correct? Okay. So Brayden Low Massa took, was in the top five in Bergen County in the 1600 meters. Sienna Cannonberg in the 400 meters, also meddling in the top five. We also have javelin champion, first place was George Calcanis. And we all, now, I was trying to understand this, we have two first places. There was also a first place, it said, for Michael Singoli in javelin and pole vault. So... I don't know. So anyway, congratulations to all of them. And in anything in track and field, I'm very impressed, because I could not even run that, what was it, that 300-yard dash of presidential fitness? That was the bane of my existence. So, anyway, congratulations. And that's all I have for tonight. Let's move on. Alright, board committee reports. Mr. Gallo! I didn't know which way to go.
I actually just have a very brief statement. We have a lot, Kyle's office has much going on in the facilities for them, and we're probably not at this meeting, but at the next meeting, maybe Kyle, you could give sort of a raw report. We have a lot of projects already in the works, and we have a lot of new ones that will be awarded in the next month or so, so we can get a little update on that, would be great.
Thank you very much. Mr. Copeland?
Okay, I'll try to make this quick. Community corner for this meeting. This past Saturday was the Miles from Marcus event at Continental Soldier Park, and my family and I attended. There was over 300 people that attended in support of the Cale family. I just wanted to congratulate the Maua Schools Foundation, the Maua High School Sports Boosters, and the Cale family for putting on just an amazing event. The heat got to a lot of people, towards... The heat got to a lot of people towards the end, but they started early and we dodged it. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to host it at the high school where it definitely belongs. So I'm looking forward to next year and making this an annual event. So congratulations to everyone who was involved.
And also, a huge shout out to Ryan Humphries, who was a big part, who was Marcus's coach, but a huge part of just the organization of the event. So I just think it's really important to highlight him as well.
Thank you. Monday's Memorial Day, let's not forget the true meaning of it. It's not just another day off of school. It's the one day of the year that we can take and remember those that made the ultimate sacrifice for the freedom that we enjoy every day. So on Monday, please take a moment with your kids and just remind them what Memorial Day is all about. Mawa's Memorial Day Parade is Monday at 10:00 a.m. It's going to step off from the Church of the Immaculate Heart Mary Parthenon and continues the Veterans Park for Remembrance Ceremony. June 1st is before our next meeting, and that's the start of Pride Month. It commemorates the riots at Stonewall Inn in Grange Village, which occurred at the end of June in 1969. They ultimately led to the gay liberation movement and the 20th century fight for LGBTQ rights in the United States. Lastly, June 3rd, a bit of history here for you, Mr. Gallo. June 3rd is National Donut Day. It's, it has special significance. It's more than just a great marketing day for Dunkin' Donuts. It goes all the way back to the First World War. A military doctor purchased eight dozen donuts and gave one to each soldier he cared for. One of those patients was a lieutenant general who appreciated it so much that he decided to start a fundraiser to assist the doctor to continue to provide donuts to his patients. Eventually, the Salvation Army got involved in the fundraiser. They determined that many needs of the soldiers could be met by creating social centers that would provide all sorts of activities, including the donuts. They sent 250 volunteers to France to help put these centers together, which soon became a military mainstay. Back at home, people use National Donut Day to raise awareness about the war and to raise funds for the Salvation Army. This tradition actually continues today. If you go on Salvation Army's website, they have a whole section on National Donut Day, and you could actually learn how to make the donuts they made back in the First World War.
Mr. Copeland, very nice. I think you missed, today was also National Tap Day. I got a notification that the Rockettes were doing a tap dance in Central Park, just to add to your trip.
I missed that.
You missed that? All right, any other, John, Mr. Denise, policy?
Yeah, policy has ten policies on tonight's agenda for the first reading. The first one is policy 1648 dot 11, the Road Forward COVID-19 Health and Safety. This policy has been revised to include some minor language changes. In addition to that mask wearing is no longer mandatory, contract tracing has been discontinued, but the reading stated if local rates increase and on-campus testing will be offered weekly. Policy 2415 point zero five, student surveys, analysis, evaluations, examinations, testing or treatment has been revised to provide additional detail regarding the requirements that school districts must receive prior written consent from the parent if they plan to have a student participate in a psychiatric or psychological examination, testing or treatment, and to provide parents notice of the information being sought and offer an opportunity for the parent to opt their student out of participating. Policy and regulation 2431 point four, prevention and treatment of sports-related concussions and head injuries. This policy has been revised to expand the scope of the policy and regulation to include intramural sports, along with interscholastic sports and cheerleading programs. In addition to requiring the implementation of a six-step return to competition process developed by the CDC. Regulation 2460 point three zero, additional compensatory special education and related services. This is a new regulation developed in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and applies to students with disabilities who exceed or will exceed the current age of eligibility for special education and related services in the school years beginning in 2020, 2021, or 2022. The regulation requires Board of Education to offer up to one year of additional compensatory special education-related services, including transition services to students with disabilities, if a determination is made by the student's IEP team and the student's parent and the student requires additional special education services. Policy and regulation 2622, student assessment. This policy and regulation has been revised based on a new English language proficiency assessment for English language learners with an IEP to measure a student's progress in English language proficiency. The student tenant is now required to report only the final results of the annual assessment to the Board of Education and to the members of the public. Policy 5460, high school graduation, has been revised to include updated language to provide greater clarity regarding the graduation assessment requirements for the classes of 2023, 2024, and 2025, and updates to the new high school diploma criteria for out-of-school individuals. A new optional section has been added to policy guide 5460 for school districts that choose to participate in the New Jersey Department of Education State Seal of Bile literacy Program. School districts have the option of allowing graduating seniors to receive a NJDOE's issued certificate and transcript notation indicating that receipt of the seal of bile literacy if they demonstrate proficiency in English in one or more rural languages. Policy 54 anti-hazing is a new policy that requires public and non-public high schools and middle schools to adopt an anti-hazing policy that outlines the appropriate penalties for violation of the district's anti-hazing policy, requires the district's anti-hazing policy be applied to conduct on or off school grounds, and requires notification of the district's anti-hazing policy to the school community. Policy and regulation 8465, biased crimes and bias-related acts, has been revised to include gender identity or expression and national origin as a protected class, and requires that all bias-related incidents be reported to local law enforcement and the county prosecutor. Two more. Policy 9560, administration of school surveys, has been revised to allow school districts to administer an anonymous voluntary survey, assessment, analysis, or evaluation concerning student health, only if prior written notification has been provided to parents. The revised policy includes a process for notification of parents and an outline of the topics that may be asked. Lastly is policy 9202, civility. This is a new policy that outlines the rules of conduct for maintaining orderly educational and administrative processes in keeping schools and administrative offices free from disruptions and preventing unauthorized persons from entering school and district rounds.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, John. All right, instruction in curriculum. Quickly report on that. We had our May meeting. Maureen Lynch came to us to discuss the summer reading program, nine through twelve. Students are actually now going to be given in the CPE courses a choice of book for their summer reading. So it hopefully will be something of more interest to them. In the honors and AP courses, they'll have a book of choice as well, but they'll also have a mandatory one as well. The library media specialists will work with eighth through eleventh grade teachers and children to kind of give them an idea of books they might want to read. The other thing is that this will now be a project-based assignment, especially for the CPE course, instead of just a traditional term paper. So kids will have an opportunity to do a little bit of different things, maybe a video, an ad, an art piece, and a writing assignment. So I'm trying to change it up and engage students in reading. Next, we heard from Dawn Savistano about a pilot program for resource program at, this is at K through three level. This is called Literacy Footprints, and this is for Resource Room students. It's two-day mini lessons addressing various reading struggles. This is going to be K through six, and the pilot is going to take place at Betsy Ross School. So this will be part of the Resource Room pullout, where there'll be a focus on reading through this program. New internship, externship opportunities at Mawa High School. Mr. Pascal brought us up to speed on our new affiliation with Eastwick College at their Patterson location. Again, this is a very exciting program because students attend Mawa High School in the morning, and then they can go in the afternoon and get a hands-on learning experience. The program will prepare the students to go into a nine-month day program following graduation, or an eighteen-month part-time program. Some of the areas of trade are plumbing, welding, et cetera, which fit in well with one of our career pathways. Lastly, next week, or not next week, at the June 15th board meeting, we will have a year-end review on our strategic plan, and the administrative team will give us an update and a year-end closeout of how we're doing and where we are so far and our goals for next year. Okay? Thank you very much. All right. Oh, yes, and thank you, Dennis, I did want to say that, that Dr. Fair just reminded me that at the June 15th meeting, we will be honoring our retirees, and that's, it's actually a lengthy list, and people who've been for many, many years in this district. So I think it will be actually a very touching tribute of Mawa and who we have here. All right, let's move on to old business, the minutes. Oh, sorry, I'm skipping today. Well, just in case, Ben, thank you very much. Mr. Kazmarski, board member, remarks or additional comments? Just for that, one of you better have one. Mr. Gallo.
So I know that the tragedy in Texas probably hit all of us like a bag of rocks, and when I heard the news yesterday, I was devastated. But what came into my mind was an educator that I had when I was growing up in the, in high school, and he was Peter Seckah. And I took, it was European History AP, covering essentially the period of time from the collapse of the Roman Empire through the period of Enlightenment. So for the whole school year, we covered violence, all the wars, the Hundred Year War, the Punic War, this war, that war, hundreds of thousands, millions of people killed. And at the end of the class, he said, why do you think we study all of this? Why did we study all of this violence? And he said, because we got to the Enlightenment and the French Revolution and the United States. And his point was, the whole course of history, of Western history, is to resolve differences through laws, through ideas, through the exchange of ideas, and not through violence, not to have the Hundred Years' War to resolve some empire's desire for territory, power, or acquisition. And so I thought, why did Peter Seckah's name come into my mind in relationship to this? So I can imagine that many of the educators in the United States in an armed district come to school today, and they think about violence that happened to the students that they love. And I want to give some encouragement that there is a purpose, a bigger purpose, to teach all of the stuff that we do, that it can lead, it should be leading to a reduction in violence. It should be leading to a situation where we resolve our differences through negotiation, through respect, through the exchange of ideas, through laws. And that, and that, if we can impart, we have a mission to continue, our continuing mission to do that, hopefully, will allow us to come to some societal, public, political agreement to potentially address some of the actor, the, the, the guns are not the cause. The cause is our natural tendency to violence. The guns are the means to the violence. But we need in our, we have such, all the educators in our audience tonight, take heart. You have an important mission. I support you in your mission of doing this, and if we can just leave a few students more inclined to peace and not to violence, we will have, we will have found some purpose in the midst of the tragedy that we have experienced. I'm just broken for these families, for the students, for the school community there, for the school community in the United States and in our own district here in Mawa. I'm sure that we are all struggling to process this, to think about all the beautiful faces we see in our classrooms every day, and just to hold them a little bit tighter and re-energize our purpose to bringing our students forward to reach their full potential. And it also ties into our diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives, that we have a sense of safety, that we, that we don't, we don't wedge our differences to the point where we, that leads to violence. That's not where, this, this whole initiative is designed to create safe learning experiences for our students so that they can reach their full potential. And so even though in this senselessness, it's so hard to find a reason, a purpose of what should I do, that's how I sort of, in my head, resolved it. So I want to thank Peter Seckah. I know he's not teaching anymore. I'm not even sure if he's quite alive. I will find out. But he left, to have gone through the whole class and then sort of leave the punchline to the end was very effective, and it has obviously affected me. So thank you, all our educators who continue to do their jobs, day in, day out, for the benefit of our students.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo, for your thoughtful statement. Mr. Copeland.
Not sure I'm going to follow that, but I don't know why I tried to follow you. But to your point, Mr. Gallo, what happened yesterday hits all of us a little differently. Four of us have children in that age group that was targeted yesterday at that school. So yesterday was definitely a trying day for some of us. And for me personally, I sat down and I tried to make sense, and then I realized it's a senseless act. You can't make sense of it, right? And just being who I am, I look to say, hey, what can I do? What can we do as a community? And I kept going back to one thing, and I have a platform here as a board member, and I wanted to use my two seconds here as just to remind our community, you parents, be involved in your children's lives. Know what they're doing. Know who their friends are. Know what their social media looks like. If you see something, say something. We hear that all the time. We've been hearing that since nine eleven. It still rings true. I also want to remind everyone, we have services, we have support services here in this community that can help you, help your children. If you need it, don't be embarrassed to raise your hand and say, hey, I need help. That's an important part of what happened yesterday, what happened in all the school shootings, quite honestly. And I think we have, we have a very special community here in Mawa. We have great first responders. We have great staff members here in our district, and really, what I just wanted to do today is just thank everyone. Thank everyone who makes me and my wife feel safe sending our two kids to these schools every single day. Yeah, it's nice to see the cop car out front, but that's, that's not the only thing that's happening, and quite honestly, I don't want to know everything that's happening. But it really just tonight was for my, for me personally, and my wife was basically just saying thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland, for your thoughtful statement as well. All right, now we move to old business, the minutes. Mr. Bleeker? Or my last? Oh, motion. Gosh. Mr. Kazmarski, help me out. Mr. Gallo, second. Mr. Bleeker will call.
Ms. Saco.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Devenero.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee.
Epstein. All right, that's why I've forgotten everything. It was just like one meeting I missed, and then I forgot what to do. All right, seventeen, new business. We will take A to, I think, MM, I have? All right. All right, I need a motion. Mr. Copeland, second by Dr. Park. Yes, any questions, Mr. Copeland? Is that what you were going for? Is that what you were going for?
Yes, exactly. Dr. Carl, can you give us a quick overview of seventeen LL for the middle school sports program? I know we're very excited about this. Mr. Corey actually mentioned tonight the orientation, so I was hoping you could kind of give us just a brief overview.
Sure. So this is a very exciting agenda item for us because, number one, it allows for us to continue to look for opportunities for our middle school students to feel connected to the middle school. As of right now, they come, they do their work, they work extremely hard, and they have great social groups there, but there's very little to connect them to the school following their school day experience. Ironically enough, which I have to circle back to the students, Mr. Beattell, is he still here? Oh, he, sorry, I didn't mean to call him out like that. He has a class that a number of his students asked me to come to the school and propose the idea of an intermural program. Simultaneously, Mr. Corey and the team over there were talking through the logistics, so it actually worked out perfectly. And they were able to present to myself and Mr. Corey and the team the benefits of creating these types of experiences. So we were able to look at surrounding districts, what they currently have in place, understand what those benefits are and what those experiences are, and we brought them back to our school district. Mr. Corey looked at a number of different sports options, and from there made a proposal to us to ask to start that process again. Now, The Ridge used to have a sports program. I believe it was, it was over eleven years ago. And it went away just due to some budgetary needs. But we wanted to bring that back because a major part of this also aligns to our strategic plan of giving a really a well-balanced experience to our students. We were able to connect with the local town sports organization because we don't want it to conflict and students to have to choose. So we were very mindful of the students being able to take part in both because we don't want them to have to pick either or. So we're very excited about this opportunity, and we're looking forward to, if approved, to having this move forward next year. So, and thank you, Mr. Beltier, because he was a major part in us gathering this information and understanding the logistics of the program so we could be thoughtful about the presentation.
And spring track. Let me say it.
If it's on the fly, give me a second.
He says everyone should hear it, soccer.
And it's on the agenda for anyone who would like to read it.
Did you want to say it one more time?
No, that's all, that's good.
Fall soccer, winter basketball, and spring track and track. All right, track, track, track and field? I don't know, is it track and field always, or is it just track? I'm not sure.
Just track.
Just track. Okay, there we go. And I just had a quick question, Dr. Fair, on MM, the substitute. I'm just curious, what prompted our change?
Yeah, that's actually interesting.
Yeah, thank you.
It was up for the RFP where we were able to review, I'm sorry. So it was up for the RFP where we reviewed several substitute agencies. We looked at the budgetary cost, obviously. But we also looked closely at the opportunity to build a much larger substitute teacher pool. And what ESS was able to provide to us was a very thorough report in terms of where their current pool lives, which is, there are a lot of substitutes that are currently in our area. And on top of that, their recruiting efforts are really thoughtful. So we're excited to partner with them if we're able to move forward with this agency because we believe we'll be able to really build our pool and get a larger fill rate in our district.
Thank you, Dr. Fair. And I'm glad to see the rate has increased, it appears, to 142.99. So I think that's also, I'm sure, appreciative of those who are willing to be substitute teachers in our district. All right, should we take roll call now? Can we do that? Mr. Bleeker, thank you.
So for seventeen A through MM, we have the motion by Mr. Copley and the second by Dr. Park. Roll on these items, Ms. Ziccone?
Yes.
Mr. Copley?
Yes and all, but I'm standing on checks number 106812 and 106911.
Thank you. Ms. Devenero?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except I'm standing on four checks. 106963, 106710, 106797, 106887, and I will also abstain from seventeen MM.
Thank you. Mr. Kazmarski?
I am excited to see the middle school sports care to reverse an incredibly misguided decision from over a decade ago, this district name.
There are board members in that.
Thankfully, and our administrators, but it's a great thing, and I'm happy to see it, absolutely yes.
Thank you. Dr. Park?
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee?
Yes. I'm just thinking back, because I have a board member in that time, I don't know. All right, now let's take new eighteen, new business personnel. Let's take first A through OO. If that's okay, we'll do PP central. Okay, so A through OO, need a motion. Mr. Denise, second by Mr. Gallo. Any comments, questions, discussion? Mr. Gallo?
I just want to congratulate Courtney on her promotion to the supervisory position.
Well, we have to vote first. I'll give you an opportunity after, if you'd like.
If you have that, I apologize, I have the same.
He's so excited to congratulate.
That Courtney will be hired at this position, we welcome you. You know, we've been fantastic in the gifted intelligence program. We look for the same sort of innovation and dedication and passion you bring to that job to your new position, thank you. And to our new Betsy Ross principal, that's my home school, so welcome, thank you. And Cressida Kaiser, my kids had her in probably her first or second year at Betsy Ross. I wish her everything good. She's been, we stay in touch all the time. She still asks about my kids twenty-some odd years later, so she's well-deserved her time. We wish her much happiness and long health and good health in her retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. All right. Roll call?
For eighteen A through OO, motion by Mr. Denise and second by Mr. Gallo. Roll Ms. Ziccone?
Yes, and I would also like to say congratulations to Courtney and Melissa. And Melissa, welcome to our district, and I think you'll love it here.
I think so.
Think so?
I already know, so I should say.
Mr. Copley?
Yes, and congratulations, Courtney, go mules, and welcome, Mr. Brown.
Ms. Devenero?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes, and congratulations also.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee?
Yes, and again, congratulations, Courtney, and welcome to you, Melissa, in your new role here in our district. Thank you very much. Yes, and then now. Would you like to stand, Courtney? I feel like everyone would like you to stand. Wave. Ms. Ross as well, now that we've officially voted you in. Again, thank you very much.
All right, we also have to do eighteen PP now separately. I like to do retirement separately. So I need a motion, Mr. Kazmarski, second by Mr. Copley. And then just a roll call, quick roll call, Mr. Green.
Ms. Ziccone?
Yes.
Mr. Copley?
Yes.
Ms. Devenero?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee?
Yes, and thank you to Ms. Kaiser for her service to our district and wishing you all the best in your retirement. All right, let's move on to public.
Before we, can I just interrupt for one second, please?
Oh, absolutely.
Before we do public comment, we greatly appreciate the administrative team for coming out and supporting our new hires, and thank you so much for spending your time. Please, you're free to leave, go home to your families. Thank you so much for spending your time.
Thank you very much. Maybe you have a public comment? Do you don't?
If you have a public comment, you're more than welcome to say it. But although, even the new hires, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you very much for coming and supporting.
And Melissa, underway, make sure that you grab a copy of the agenda, because that's a huge deal. And make sure you meet Christine Noonan. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Public questions or comments. Public participation at work meetings is in accordance with Fila 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. It's eight twenty-two on our clock, just in case, want to keep some time. All right, public participation or comment? Oh, motion to open to the public. Mr. Kazmarski and Ms. Ziccone, second. I don't know, my Robert's rule is just going to open the window to that, or not. Sorry, apologize.
Hi, Sue Belluardo. Last time I was here, and we had quite a discussion about Agenda Item K and the sex standards and writing the curriculum. So I made the comment that you can override the governor legally. You said, "I was wrong," I said, "you were wrong," we went back and forth. And as it turns out, I discovered I was not wrong, and you were. So I just want to clarify this on public record. Garwood School District, has anybody seen their response or their video? Yes. So I called the state myself, spoke with the legal department, spoke with the Secretary of the Board of Education, and the response I received. And many boards are putting this on their videos and their board meetings. Were you aware that you get a deduction on your Q-SAC score? And that's the reason that you follow your standards? That it's not actually a legal requirement? Nobody's going to go to jail if they decide that it's in the best interest of the community to get parental input. The problem is that the parents, there are parents that feel that people can determine age appropriate, but who has anybody determined what age is appropriate of what considered when? It's not a matter of what you put in and when you put it in. It's a matter of who's to say that my seventh grader this year would have been taught that anal sex is appropriate? I don't think seventh grade boys, it's not that I don't think that's appropriate to never learn about it in life, and I hope my head will stand, but the seventh grade boys running around with that information, it's going to be a hot mess. So I would have a problem with that. Not because I have a problem with the curriculum, but I personally, seventh grade boys, have a problem with that.
And Ms. Belluardo, as I think we've expressed, and thank you for bringing this information.
Yeah, I clarified it for you, yes.
Thank you for clarifying and bringing us information that we were unfamiliar with. I do thank you for that. But I think we've also clarified that there are opportunities. This is being written over the summer, this has not been written. And then there will be opportunities if parents such as yourself make the decision to opt out of certain of those.
No, no, but this is not, please don't play words games here. I, that's not what was clarified. No, 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 that is what we're doing here. That's not what was clarified. What was clarified was, I asked, I said it was legal that you can override a board, and your board said to me on multiple occasions, "We are not allowed." I can play it for you, I have it right here, walk you.
Ms. Belluardo, I understand.
And I'm furious over this because we stand here back and forth, and your board consistently says, "It's the law, we must follow the law."
Ms. Belluardo, we are choosing, then, I can clarify if you'd like. The Mala School District is choosing to follow those standards, and we are looking at the way that it will be appropriately written. Dr. Bavino is very well-versed in the standards. She's our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and she will be working closely with the teachers in writing the curriculum that is appropriate per age level. We have multiple opportunities if parents are concerned and if parents feel that they would like to opt out of that, and I think we have expressed that. I really do appreciate the information, and if we give misinformation at times, we apologize. Perhaps that does happen. So thank you for clarifying, and thank you for letting us know.
Have you once said what you're saying now? Have you watched any of the videos? Not once have, what you just said now has that once been said. Okay, so nobody ever said, "We get a four-point deduction, that's why we're doing it." Is that the reason? Why don't we just clarify it right now? Because that was important to know. I can't believe I spent hours doing this research. Wait, wait. I just want my time to speak about this particular agenda. I spent hours clarifying this.
I have given you time. I would ask you now if you have another comment, to please comment on something else.
Well, let's just clarify so all the parents finally know the answer. So what we're doing here is, I spent hours researching this when I could have just been told, listen, we're putting it in, we're not looking for your input right now, wait till the end of the summer, after we've written it, then you could comment, but right now, we're putting it in not because it's the law, we're choosing to put it in. We want it in. We are not saying it's the law.
Unfortunately.
That's the truth. I would appreciate it if it were the truth.
Again, Ms. Belluardo, I'm going to ask you to please allow me to also speak. If you'd like to speak, I require that you give an opportunity for us to speak back.
I just want it to be the truth, so I know the truth.
No, again, so if you continue to speak over, then we can't have an exchange, okay? So at this point, you've made your point. I've thanked you for bringing this information to us as a board. I'm not sure in past meetings what we have actually said, that we're looking at it, we're going to follow it.
When was the last meeting? Yes, did you watch it?
Well, and I, to be frank, I wasn't at the last meeting.
But you were at the meeting before and the meeting before. I'm the first one.
Yeah, so we're looking at the curriculum. The curriculum is being written over the summer, that has been made very clear. And at this point, that is all there is that needs to be said. So we thank you very much for your comment.
Just don't say that something is the law when it's not the law.
Please, we thank you for your comment. Thank you very much.
All right, but let's just be clear from now on, because that's huge.
Thank you very much.
Can we clarify that? Just one, if you don't mind.
Unless I'm missing the boat.
No, if you don't mind.
People are furious.
Let me, I don't know about that.
What, Mr. Brown? Hold on. I've answered the question, asked and answered. Thank you, Ms. Belluardo, I do appreciate it.
I would like to hear what Mr. Copley has to say.
Unfortunately, I am the one who can say things. Mr. Copley cannot answer from the floor unless I ask him to answer. And he wants to clarify something that has been clarified.
People are questioning this, why aren't you interested in helping out and questioning?
Ms. Belluardo?
It's not okay.
Ms. Belluardo, I have, we have answered. If anybody else would like to answer, at this point, I have answered.
Mr. Copley just said it was.
Okay, Mr. Copley, what would you like to clarify?
I just want to clarify what we're talking about with the standards versus curriculum. Because we've talked about this in the past, and I think there is a misunderstanding of what standards are, which are mandated by the state, versus what curriculum is. Is that something we can clarify? Maybe we not have to do that now, maybe our attorney could clarify what we have to follow from the state as far as state mandates versus what we have from curriculum. Maybe we could have that.
Absolutely. Why don't we have that answer for the next meeting? And we'll ask Dr. Bavino perhaps to speak to that more specifically. Okay, thank you, Ms. Belluardo.
I appreciate it.
Do I need to write my name?
Yes, sir. And your address.
Look at that sweatshirt. Nice.
It's still fits.
Hello, good evening, good evening, doctor, president, board members, friends. Bob Lockwood, Tenhome Spun Court. I just really have one question, and Dr. Dettore, I wrote you a letter, so I just want to make sure that you got it. I don't know if you responded, I haven't seen anything. So really, all I wanted to do was just confirm that you got my letter. And I just wanted to ask, would I be getting a response?
Yes, Mr. Lockwood. I got your letter last week, I was away on a convention last week, we were preparing for the convention. I could give you a call tomorrow morning to speak to, because it was very specific to the standards, the health and curriculum standards. So I could give you a call tomorrow. Let me review the letter one more time, just to see the content, and I'll give you a call, and we can talk.
That's great.